Good evening, welcome to the Westford-Suckmore meeting of August 13th, 2024. We'll start with the pledge allegiance led by Tom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is ours, under God, in his name, with liberty and justice for all.
Occasional notice, John is remote tonight, so we'll be doing all of our votes by roll call. With that in mind, on open forum and announcements, I've got three, so there's only one on the agenda. So the first is the 4-H Fairground, 4-H Fair, which actually is not this weekend, it's next weekend, August 23rd to 25th, the fairgrounds. If you want to renew your faith in our youth, go to that. I'm always impressed with the kids who've got livestock, because first thing in the morning you have to be aware of is your livestock. Last thing at night before we go to bed, it's the animals. You know, it's a great maturing lesson for the kids who've got horses and other animals, but also the quality of craft work. If you look at the arts craft shed, the woodworking, the needlework, making honey and painting, it's really quite amazing, so I'd encourage you to go to that. Secondly, last Saturday, we had our honoring of India's independence on the town common, as we do every year. We're an anchor community for the India Association of Greater Boston. It was a great ceremony, thanks to everybody who was there, and thanks to our highway department or public works department for having the grounds looking great. Also, thanks to Wendy Lloyd from our DEI committee. She is a toastmaster. She also is an event organizer master. It was incredibly well organized and really, really well done. We did get a plaque of appreciation from the India Association of Greater Boston, you know, thanking us for being a host town. And very pleased to present it to Kristen, we'll put these either in this room or perhaps down in the lobby.
Thank you, we'll definitely get that posted.
And then finally, there's a number of emails, a number of announcements going around about the Shoba Valley Medical Center closing. I've only received a couple of emails from residents with concerns about that. We aren't impacted as much as other towns, but 7% of our ambulance runs respond, are due into Nishoba. Most of those mutually aid to other towns, not from Westford. Even so, I think there's a desire on the part of some of the residents that we take a position, as has Schrilling and Preperal and Devens. So Monday night, we have a meeting, a joint boards meeting on budgetary matters. We will take that under advisement with a possible letter on Monday, so we've not forgotten it, but we'll do it on Monday. Anything else for open forum from the board? Anything from our town manager?
I'd just like to remind residents, there's two more days to provide input on the strategic plan framework. Our assistant town manager and community wellness coordinator were at the farmer's market today, entertaining people's comments and suggestions, so you can enter that survey through our town website and looking forward to that. And then the board will be meeting with the consultant in early September to review that, and we'll put out more material to the public after that point. And also just want to publicly thank our public works department, police and fire, and other town staff who helped facilitate the zip trip that occurred on August 2nd. It was a huge success. Fox 25 was a great partner, very organized, and we appreciate all of the town staff input and support on that, because they worked very hard to get those common grounds looking well for that day.
Is it, try to, we're gonna say something, John, I thought I'd better cut you off. I guess not, okay. Anything from the audience? With that, on to our first or next agenda item, the consent agenda for the following approvals. First, a special license for a Friday night concert. Applicant is Good Pickin' Farm, Sandra Habe. August 16th is the event, it's from 6:30 to 8:30 at 5 Gould Road. Also, on August 30th, similar event, same event, also 6:30 to 8:30 at 5 Gould Road. So two licenses for Good Pickin' Farm, August 16th and the 30th. Secondly, or third, to have you account, a street/road closure for a church picnic. This is the Etta Methodist Church, David Walsh, Walsh is the applicant, Sunday, September 8th, 2024, on, it'll be a 10 church street to the intersection of Broadway, from 9:30 AM to 1 PM. And then next, we have a road race for the Live for Live. It's the 14th Annual Bike Ride and Run. Applicant is Christine Kidd, date is September 15th, 2024, on a Sunday, at the 4-H Fairgrounds, starting at 8:00 AM. Continuing on, request the town common bandstand. This is for the Jurassic Violence Awareness Month. There'll be signs and purple lights on the bandstand. Applicant is Westford Collision for Nonviolence, Gail Johnson, from October 1st to 31st, on the common, obviously. And finally, Witch's Woods. Applicant is Melissa Robbins, on behalf of the Shoba Hill Corp. The Shoba Valley Skieria, 79 Powers Road. The dates are September 27th to 29th, October 4th through the 6th, 11th through 13th, 18th through 20th, 25th to 27th, and 31st in November 1st and 2nd, all in 2024, from 5:00 PM till midnight. What's the pledge of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Subject to public safety comments?
I had a question on this. So on the public safety comments, the police were recommending that the license be extended over, you know, from the 15th to the 19th for the first event, and then similarly, I think from the 29th to the 2nd. Do we need to note that in the motion, or anywhere?
I think with the motion saying pending, or with public safety comments, we'll wrap that in, but if you'd like to add that into the motion, we can certainly do that.
It's fine, whatever we feel is most appropriate, I just want to call that out.
Okay, so we have a motion from Andrea, a second from Chris, was that second? Oh, okay. So all in favor, John?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. 710 item is the final, that sounds rather unlikely. The final American Rescue Plan funding requests, and we've got two of them, which I think Kristen will speak to.
I will. So Dan O'Donnell has given another update of where we are with our ARPA balance. I gave an update last meeting, it has changed a little bit. Our current balance is $671,424.48. The balance has increased slightly since the last board meeting, because we have closed out a little over $6,000 in completed projects while working on the year-end process. We still are expecting some larger closeouts from the Cameron Senior Center upgrades and the public safety radio upgrade, but those projects are not completed, so we don't have those final numbers. Right now, we are working with departments to make sure that they have their contracts in place for their allocated funds, prior to the December 31st of 2024 deadline, to complete those projects by December 31st, 2026. The select board in fiscal '24 authorized eight projects totaling $197,446. So far in fiscal '25, you spent a whopping $675 last month, which was for the cash counting machine. And this evening, we have two requests totaling $64,900. One for $14,900 associated with 12 North Main Street land survey, and one for $50,000 for a two-year contract with NIMCOG Sustainability Support Services. If those are approved, the available balance would be $606,524 and change. And I'm happy to go into each individual project request this evening, or just take questions, whatever the board prefers.
I think for the benefit of those who probably did not check our packets who are watching, at least the first one, I think, is that we asked, like, why are we doing this on top of what we've already spent?
Sure, absolutely. And Mike Edwards just joined, so he can also help with the sustainability support if I can't do that. So I will first do the land survey services associated with 12 North Main Street. So as the board is aware, and many members of the public are aware, we've received several state and federal grants for the cleanup services at 12 North Main Street. Additionally, there's been a great amount of work done on that property related to wetlands delineation, testing soils and the like. What we have determined is that there was no land survey done in the past for 12 North Main Street and the associated town properties. So we feel that it's in the best interest of the town, moving forward with these cleanup efforts and future efforts to redevelop the property, that paying for a land survey and having that land survey in hand would be in the best interest of the town of Westford. So working with our current contractor, Nobus, who is doing the cleanup near the incinerator, they've helped us go out to bid for a survey company to do that work, and feel that the work can be done in pretty short order, to get that information, so we have a survey that is appropriate for the property.
That's right. Mike, most of cover the sustainability over here, because I think people also will ask about that. The $50,000, what is that buying us for NIMCOG?
Yeah, so for starters, it's going to get us the support from them to do our green communities reporting, to do all of our green communities monitoring, to assist with the preparation of the next year's green communities submission. They're also going to be doing, and we talked about this in the strategic planning workshop, the need to do some additional engagement and some kind of, not necessarily reprioritization, but to really understand what the priorities are that we need to be focusing on for sustainability. So they'll work with Raftelis in a first phase of just a conversation with Clean Energy Committee, with the Recycling Commission, with any of the other stakeholders, to help us kind of map out exactly what our priorities are, if it is, it may end up being reaffirming the three that we already have, which is fine, we just need to have that clarified, and understand what kind of deliverables that needs to result in, help us build a timeline for that. The rest of it is, we're keeping it somewhat loose, so that we have a little bit of flexibility coming out of that engagement session, so that we can really work with clean energy for about 75% of the remaining hours, and with the Westford Recycling Commission for about 25% of the remaining hours, to support them, to meet with them, provide them quarterly updates on what we're doing, and really to engage them to help us map out the projects they want to do. So really, a two-year engagement that is fairly well-defined in the first portion, and then gives us some flexibility moving forward, so that we can really take some direction from the board, from those two bodies, and get ourselves some really concrete projects and initiatives to carry us through the next two years.
Thanks. Any, Tom?
So, thanks, Mike. I'm a big fan of getting to some kind of concrete prioritized plan that we can all buy into, with some clear deliverables we can track and measure against. So this helps us get there, and I appreciate the flexibility. I guess I'm wondering, what's our best guess about, like, some date, that we'll be able to say, okay, we've done the work, maybe there's more to do, but here's the priorities, these sub-levels are things we think we can achieve, and we've got dates next to them, and we're going to really begin to hold ourselves to account.
I think we'll be able to, our first step is going to be, obviously, we've got the immediate timeline of dealing with the green communities reporting, so that's a fall activity for us. Concurrent to that, we're going to work with Raftelis to basically bring NIMCOG into that kind of wrap-up to the strategic plan, identify what our specific goals and initiatives are. The hope is, is that when we finish up the strategic plan, we're going to have alongside that our specific sustainability initiative. So, you know, late fall, early winter is the hope. I think over the next couple of meetings, we'll be able to give you a much more concrete idea. I want very firm schedules, I want very firm deliverables, I want measurable outcomes, and so we've got to have the conversation to figure out exactly what those things are. I want to have those in place as soon as possible. So the goal would be certainly not later than really December, to have kind of a full plan mapped out of, okay, this is what we're doing for the remainder of the fiscal year, these are the things that we're going to push to the next fiscal year. And then, as part of this, we've still got to have some ongoing conversations with land use, about how they might fit into, you know, planning discussions and zoning issues around sustainability issues, specifically battery storage, solar panel siting, things like that. But we're, that's about as far as we've gotten in terms of having a concrete idea of timeline, but I expect to come into the, you know, into January with all those things settled.
Okay, so friendly request to the work documents and to the specification would be December 15th, we're going to have a working report that says our first draft of specifically what we're going to measure, and what we think we're going to accomplish.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable for our first fiscal year.
And people may say, look, it's August, you know, we went to the moon faster than this, but it's, there's a bunch of real stuff stacked up here that we need as inputs, like the facility usage, like strategic plan. So I understand why we have to stack this behind there, but, okay, as soon as, as soon as we can.
If, we're going to move as quick as we can. I had a conversation with Mike Berlinski earlier this week about kind of how we're going to approach that engagement discussion. I'm going to work as close as I can with both of those groups, basically, to say, all right, you guys are, you're driving this bus right alongside us, let's figure out what a schedule is that works. We've also got, you know, the wrap-up to the IGA, we've got the Tecton space analysis coming through, all those things are kind of fit into it. We're kicking off in the next couple weeks on the town side, the capital planning piece, you know, in terms of the capital request from the department. So we're having some discussions over, how do we at least start taking some baby steps on getting some of those planning efforts rowing in the same direction? It's, I think that's probably a pretty good timeline to say, you know, mid-December, we should have some pretty concrete coming out of the NIMCOG effort.
Thanks.
Anything else? Chris?
So, you know, the town has worked with NIMCOG on a number of different initiatives, and they've always done a great job for us, but have we, did we talk to them about, have they provided this level of service to other communities? And did we talk to those communities, were they satisfied with the work that NIMCOG was doing for them?
So I can answer that. So NIMCOG has provided many other communities with the green community support of the MEI reporting. Also, they have provided facilitation-type of opportunities to the other municipalities that they work with. We sat down with NIMCOG's executive director and their sustainability planner, and are very confident that they can carry this through, through that course. And I've had conversations through my managers group with, who work with NIMCOG directly, so we feel very confident that they can take this on, will be successful with us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone from the audience or online? Beth?
I'm Beth Perkins from Patriot Lane, and also a member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. I'm here speaking as an individual, though. I think Mike Berlinski, our chair, is also online, but I just thank Mike for being proactive about moving forward with this request, and I believe, especially now after the loss of the sustainability coordinator, that we need additional consulting and advising for clean energy and sustainability, for the continuation of the roadmap, the IGA, and so many of the projects we're, we're working on. And I also think, as we've all talked about before, climate certainly isn't an individual issue here in Westford, it is a regional, national, international issue. And I think we really can take advantage of NIMCOG because of their regional expertise and the advice they can give us on what neighboring communities are doing and so on. So I'm thankful for Mike for submitting this request and supporting.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so what's the will of the board?
Do we need an individual motion for each?
So what I have realized is, we have, I would like an individual motion for each one. Under your contract section of your agenda, we also have a request to sign the contract for the land surveying services. It was my mistake that I did not have a request to sign a contract for the NIMCOG services, so if you could wrap that all into the sustainability one, I would appreciate it. But if you feel like you need to wait, we can certainly wait.
Okay, so we want a motion to approve the land surveying services for 12 North Main Street, 14-9.
And authorize.
And authorize some of the contract, which we'll skip that ahead of that piece. But also to authorize the spending of $50,000 for NIMCOG from ARPA, and also to sign that contract.
If you could amend that to authorize the town manager to negotiate and then execute that agreement, we're still working on finalizing the scope. I need to talk with Mike and Ken to make sure we have the language in there that they like as well.
It's complicated by friendly amendment, so yes, thank you. Patty, did you get that?
You have the draft scope, you have the draft scope in your package.
Yeah, I can catch you up later.
I think Kristen wants two motions, one for each one. So let me, let me start with, so I'll move to approve the land surveying services associated with 12 North Main Street, in the amount of $14,900, and to authorize a contract for that amount with land surveying services.
Second.
All in favor, John?
Aye.
I can't see the mouth move. Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I will move to approve the negotiation and to authorize the town manager's office to continue negotiations with NIMCOG for services related to sustainability, and to authorize entering into a contract for $50,000.
And authorize use of ARPA funds.
And authorize use of ARPA funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Andrea?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So next, remand proposed zoning bylaw amendments to the planning board for public hearing process on temporary trailers. The good news, as you may have observed, is that we got approval from the state AG for our MBTA communities zoning, but in the process, they flagged us being a little out of date with our bylaws relating to temporary trailers. So if you were, say, renovating your house, you had to have a trailer on the property temporarily to live in, that's temporary trailer. So all we have to do tonight is say, planning board, please deal with it on our behalf. Am I correct in that?
Yes, that's correct. So we did a bunch of these at your last meeting, but this came in after the fact. So this would remand back to the planning board for a public hearing process, and then be put on the October special town meeting warrant.
So I'll make the motion that we remand proposed zoning bylaw amendment to the planning board for public hearing process, related to temporary trailers.
Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Moving on to old and new business, first, as you're all aware, you've probably seen the, hopefully you've seen the requirements from the state to first establish a Robinson Elementary School Building Committee, and then secondarily to slid interest for participants. We have one applicant so far that kind of jumped the gun, but, so I guess, Chris, do you want to address this?
I can actually take this part. Chris is here to support me on this part, and then he's going to speak to the, to the next matter that also goes along with this. So as the board is aware, and some members of the public may be aware, the Mass School Building Authority has invited the town of Westford to enter into the feasibility study process for the Robinson Elementary School. What that means is that we have a variety of items to move forward with related to the town's school enrollment, how the building currently functions, and then enter into an agreement with the Mass School Building Authority for a feasibility study that would have the town's OPM, owner's project manager, and an architect to go forward with a feasibility study. That does require town funds, so that's a second step. The first step that the state requires is for the town to establish a school building committee. So we are proposing this to be called the Robinson Elementary School Building Committee. This is separate from the permanent town building committee. The MSBA has certain requirements of individuals that must serve on a school building committee related to an MSBA project. So the draft charges in your packet, the requirements, my recommendation based upon the MSBA requirements, my past work in this type of realm, and having conversations with the school superintendent and others, is that the committee would be nine voting members, one select board member, one finance committee member, or a local budget official, which could be the town's finance director or the school's finance director, a school committee member, the town manager or designee, the superintendent of schools, the building principal, the local official responsible for building maintenance, that would be Jeff Goodwin, and then two members of the community with knowledge of the educational mission of the facility, experience with architecture, engineering, or construction expertise. And this could be members of the permanent town building committee, or it could be members at large, based upon what the select board would like to do. This committee is organized through the select board, you are the appointing authority for this. So Chris, before I turn it over to the select board, do you have anything you wanted to add related to the creation of the school building committee?
No, I think you covered it wonderfully, just the idea that, yes, they have their very specific parameters that, of certain positions that need to be on the committee, but I think it's, you explained it very well.
So, so here's my concern. I understand that the MSBA, they have their own requirements, but we have a permanent town building committee that's been building, you know, overseeing buildings, and building buildings now for, I don't know, 10, 15 years, or however long.
It's 2003. We looked it up for this meeting.
Longer than I thought, so. And they have that expertise, and while I understand, you know, a select board member, finance, school committee, all those people need to be on the committee, it then says two members of the community with knowledge and educational mission of the facility and experience with architect and engineering. I'm fearful that the folks who we have appointed in our town, and who have been part of the building arena for 21 years, now, aren't going to be involved in this, and I guess I'm concerned that we aren't going to have the expertise on this committee that we need. So I'm wondering, how can we mesh what the MSBA, what they need versus what we have? And how we can do that?
Yeah, so we could certainly expand the voting members from nine to a greater number, but we do have to have the people listed there. So nine was the suggestion, but your board is the appointing authority, and you could certainly expand the number of members on the committee, and require it to be permanent town building committee members, or something else.
Well, just observation that town building committee is already working on library and possibly a fire station, and, you know, so if you've got two, my concern is, with two members, we want, I think, two members of town building committee on this committee, even though you've got zero community input at large. So my thought would be, if we made, went to 11 members, you could still get a quorum, but then you can have two or three town building committee, still have room for a couple of others from town who may not be on the committee, but have the right knowledge.
I think that makes perfect sense. I mean, I don't want to not have community involvement, I just don't want to lose the expertise that we, that we already have, so I think that makes absolute.
John has a question, too.
I think that makes sense, and to expand it to 11, and that allows for both.
And we know, as you get bigger and bigger, the problem becomes quorum, but we know that town building committee, we're already tied up with getting quorum, other projects will make it work, so.
Or the other thing you can do is make those two folks ex officio.
Or alternates.
I wouldn't make them alternates, but I'd make them ex officio, and they, you know, members, and then they don't count as quorum.
But what does that mean, in terms of voting?
They wouldn't vote either.
I think I'd make it live a member board.
All right, I mean.
Let's start with that.
I would start with 11, and if they have quorum problems, they can come back and tell us.
John?
Yes, Scott, I've got a couple questions. First off, especially on the charge, in the committee charge, you say that it talks about the study and whatnot, and then they get, and then carry out such project if deemed necessary and appropriate by the town, the MSBA. So my question is, I was looking for a little bit more of an explanation of just how this process is going to work. In other words, how are we going to do the design, and then the construction? And to try to add to that, when you look at that, what is it, 963 CMR, and they talk about formation of this committee, they talk about the eligible applicant being the town, and then they say that this committee is generally to monitor the application process and to advise the eligible applicant during the construction of an approved project. So how are we going to do the construction? I know we talked about not having a permanent town building committee involved, is this committee going to execute the construction? Are they going to sign the contract? Maybe that's the reason they got that contract provision in there, but just how is this going to progress?
John, I don't think we're at construction yet, but Kristen can.
Right, so, so this committee is starting with the feasibility stage, so studying the current building, studying what could happen in the future related to this building, building, studying what could happen in the future related to this building or grade configuration or otherwise. That is only if the town of Westford approves the funding for that feasibility. So we first form the committee, we then apply to MSBA for that approval. They say, "Yes, you're approved." Then we have to go to town meeting to approve funding for a feasibility study. If town meeting says, "Yes, you are approved for that funding," we move forward with the feasibility study and this building committee. Then we determine, based upon that feasibility study, do we move forward into a design and construction project? If we decide, "Yes, we are going forward with a design and construction project," this committee stays intact. They are appointed by the select board, so you would give them the approval and the review of all of the contracts under my supervision, and then we would move forward from there. This process is going to be a five- to seven-year process if we even get through feasibility. So I definitely understand your concern, John, related to the oversight of contracts and the oversight of the select board versus this building committee. It is very regimented through the MSBA process. It's laid out very clearly. There would be a number of town meeting votes in order to authorize funding and authorize contracts, so we're not quite there yet, but there will be many checks and balances along the way.
Yeah, well, if I can continue, well, I guess I don't have any problem with the committee and the role that they have, but the way I read the regulation, the town could decide that you could have the Permanent Town Building Committee involved and manage the construction or even the design.
But we're not there yet.
That's the way I read this regulation.
So the Permanent Town Building Committee can be a partner in this, but they are not the, the school building committee is the authority here under the select board. The Permanent Town Building Committee can guide it, but it is very regimented through the Mass School Building Authority that the Permanent Town Building Committee is not the committee that leads the process. This building committee.
No, I think Chris wanted to chime in as well.
I'd just like to have somebody take a look at that CMR and the part, the part that they say they're the advisor, and the town is really responsible for the construction. I mean, I just, I'm interpreting the regulation, and I just read it. I think it would be a good idea that, I don't have a problem with the formation of the committee moving forward on feasibility study, but I think we might want to take a look at that and see if that really means what we think.
Chris, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to chime in that, I think, you know, Kristen did an excellent job explaining the process. The two of us have been in a couple of different meetings with the MSBA where they've talked about, it's actually nine different phases that could take us through these five to seven years. And I guess to John's question, there is language that they talk about because the MSBA is dealing with both regional districts and municipalities that have different makeups to them, and so not everybody has a permanent town building committee. And so what they're talking about is they're just making it very clear that for their purposes, we have to have the representation of the superintendent, the school committee, the finance director, things that are, who are members who aren't members of our Permanent Town Building Committee. And so they've laid out these expectations for their process that is different than what we have established already. So I think that's the unique situation that we're looking at, and I think the conversations you've already had, and I think, you know, that have been brought up about that we do have the Permanent Town Building Committee, and so we want to make sure that we have representation there on this committee, I think is an excellent idea. It's just a unique situation that we have in Westford, that we have this permanent committee established, not everybody does.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have time, and I just wanted to create the distinction between feasibility, preparation, design, and then actually executing the project, how we do that, town's responsibility versus, you know, it's all the town, including the schools. So, okay.
And I think Kristen laid that out very well, too, in like reminding everybody that there's multiple town votes that would need to take place before, as we progress through this process. So people will have plentiful opportunities to voice their opinions and thoughts as to whether they support this or not.
Okay, thanks.
So we're now at a.
The only reason I do have to raise my hand is I don't have the ability to raise my hand.
That's okay, you can wave, we'll see you.
That's great, you had some help from someone in the audience, which we appreciate, too. So if we miss anything, don't be shy about raising your hand.
So I think we have, I guess, that's for 11 members. Do you want to make it the four at large, or do you want to make it two PTBC and two at large, or do we care right now?
I would make it two PTBC and two at large.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Very good, is there a second?
Sorry.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? And Tom, don't be, stay tuned, we'll get to you next. All in favor, John? Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next, request to sign initial compliance certification for Robinson School feasibility study. This one actually is Chris.
Chris, do you want to take that?
Sure. So this is an organizational part of the process, so one of the first things we have to do in this eligibility period is we just need the chief executive officer for the town, who would be our town manager, Kristen Lass.
The select board threw me.
You're right, but they request these three signatures, right? So the chief executive officer needs to sign it, the superintendent of schools needs to sign it, and the chairperson of the school committee needs to sign just this acknowledgement of the process. If you've been able to read through this, most of it's about acknowledging that, you know, the funds aren't guaranteed, that we are not, that we've been transparent with all the information about our buildings, the different layers to this piece. And so what we're asking tonight is that the select board vote to authorize to give town manager Lass the ability to sign this. We'll be having a similar vote with the school committee at our next meeting, where they'll will vote to approve chairperson Young and for me to be able to sign as well.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Happy to second it.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
And speaking of Town Building Committee, which we've now volunteered for more work, we need some cavalry to come over the hill, and so we have a request to approve two appointments. One, Michael Patton is a full member for terms expired June 30th, 2025, and Tom Wimberg is an alternate member for terms expired June 30th, 2026. You both have, in fact, Tom is here tonight.
And Michael is here.
Oh, Michael's here, too. Yep, very good, Michael's here, too. So welcome. You both have spent several meetings with the board before we could get a quorum to actually take that vote, so.
I'll move to approve, I'll move to approve.
We're happy to have them. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
All in favor, Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you for volunteering, and we've already added to your plate.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. We really appreciate that.
Next, we have a request to consider reimbursement of a building permit, because of building permit fees for 5 minutes at 70 Boston Road, and Ellen's here with her clipboard.
Looking right through the chips.
It's a disgraceful way to do this.
The gays are doing the handspraying.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Hardy from 39 Main Street. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. With me tonight, two are two other of our board members, Jan Smith and Cheryl Major, and I want to explain to you how we got to this board tonight with this request. Last December, when the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. applied for our building permit to start the five affordable apartments at our newly acquired property at 70 Boston Road, we anticipated that our nonprofit would be exempt from paying for the building permit. We were not correct on that, but I want to explain to you why we thought we would be. First was our nonprofit status. We thought that that would put us in a separate category from other applicants. And the second reason was that from the very beginning of our work to put our project together, we saw ours as a public-private partnership with the town of Westford, phrase we used all the time at the meetings that we had with you and other town boards. The partnership is based on our shared goals. The Drew Farmhouse exists for one reason, to create workforce-affordable housing. 70 Boston Road will not only have five affordable apartments, but thanks to our partnership now with Habitat for Humanity, which is such a gift, there will be two three-bedroom homes in our barn for two Habitat families. The town's own housing production plan, adopted by your board in the fall of 2022, has as goal number four, quote, "Housing for Workforce. Create and preserve diverse housing units for households," and I think you have this later, thank you, "at 80 to 120% of the area median income, including a wide variety of housing types for young adults, families, and for families that need three or more bedrooms." The town has no plans to meet this goal in the immediate future, but it's exactly what the Drew Farmhouse and Habitat are creating at this moment. And our partnership with the town is also a public-private financial partnership. The Drew Farmhouse has funded the $1.1 million purchase of the vacant Caldwell Banker property. And our volunteer board, we have no paid staff, is providing the oversight of the renovation and the long-term management of the apartments. For Westford's financial part, town meeting was asked to appropriate $1.45 million, a lot of money, but that came from community preservation money already paid by taxpayers in prior years and saved specifically to fund affordable housing, historic preservation, and open space and recreation. This CPA money is not available for the town's budgetary needs. It had no effect on the override vote. It was irrelevant to that. It's a separate fund. So last December, we learned that being a nonprofit does not exempt us. From the $21,753 permit fee, that was a whopper. Even when we realized we'd have to pay, we never thought it would be that much money. A waiver from your board is a requirement in order to not pay the fee. I met with town manager Chris Lass at that point to explain the reasons why she could not recommend a waiver to the select board at that time. And because the Drew Farmhouse volunteers had so many things on our plate last December as we were trying to get this project up and running, we'd owned the property for only a month, we were just starting construction, our board chose not to pursue the waiver then, but we are pursuing it now. Encouraged by the wonderful waiver that you voted for Habitat two weeks ago, we were delighted by that on Habitat's behalf. Because of the history of our public-private partnership with the town, we applied for this waiver. Five town boards unanimously supported this project in the six months of our process of asking for permits. The largest special town meeting in Westford's history needed to give the CPA appropriation only a majority, and the article passed last October with a two-thirds vote. I invite this board to join the five other town boards and town meeting in giving the project their wholehearted support by waiving the building the permit fee, which will go right back into the project, which we are one halfway through, and 60% of the money we've spent so far has been paid to Westford businesses and contractors. I think we've done what we promised. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ellen. So, I know we have some ideas, I think, that might want to speak to this, but first, I want to ask the board for their thoughts, and I also have any hands raised, but I'm guessing.
I do have a question also in the comments, but after the board goes.
Tom?
Go ahead. After you.
Should I go first? So, you know, I was very, very pleased to vote for support of this project and town meeting, and I feel like the use of those funds, which you correctly point out are designated for this purpose, was wise and important, and I think workforce housing is something that we desperately need. I'm persuaded by the financial environment that the operating fund is in. This would be an operating fund item. This would be money we would not be able to collect to support the operating needs of the town. As people are well aware, we're in a particularly difficult situation. We're definitely facing a large number of layoffs that'll affect many, many town services in the coming year. I feel like there needs to be a special scrutiny applied to foregoing revenue that the town is able to collect in the due course of business, because that is, that is a direct, you know, exclusion. That's money that we can't spend on salaries, it's money that we can't spend on other town services and environment that is really, really dire. So from my point of view, I'm, through the lens of an operating budget item in the environment that we're in, I'm struggling with the idea of approving foregoing of revenue, loss of this revenue, given the other very, very difficult and painful changes that we're going to have to make inevitably over the course of the next, you know, budgetary cycle. So that's why, that's why I'm concerned about approving this tonight.
Andrea?
Sure. I am equally concerned with, for many of the same reasons that you just articulated, Tom. Also, I think not only does that $21,000 go to our operating budget, but it also covers the work of our inspectors who go out there during the project to look at the electrical, the plumbing, the building itself, et cetera. And so that money helps to pay actually for their work and their salaries right now as opposed to in the future. And without that funding, again, and without that money for their, that goes to their salaries, I'm concerned on the impact of the operating budget. I would also point out that we did not waive fees for the Helena Crocker project, and we did not waive fees for Roberta McGuire's project either.
Was there a request for waivers on those, or were they not asked for?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Thank you very much.
I don't believe they were asked.
I don't think they were asked for, but regardless, we didn't, they didn't ask, we didn't waive them. And so, again, you know, $21,000, given our operation and budgetary constraints, when, you know, we were here two weeks ago with a fire department asking for overtime that we're not sure we can fund either, even though that would come out of a different bucket, we're concerned about what happens when that bucket runs dry. It just gives me a lot of pause for thought at this point. It really does.
Chris?
So Ellen, looking at the information that you submitted as part of our packet, there are some, you know, high-level numbers on the financials of the project, and it says, "Amount still to be raised by the Drew Farmhouse, $33,300." Is that still accurate?
That's a minimum.
That's a minimum.
I mean, we're not through the project, Chris, so we don't know what we're going to run into, but given the figures that we've got at this moment, as of June 30th, that's what we're forecasting.
And so if we didn't waive this, then you'd be looking at having to raise $50,000, $54 or a change. Is that correct? And it could be more. I mean, if that was not, if that, if your organization was not successful in fundraising that money, what would be the impact to the project?
Well, we'd have to find a way to get it. It's the same way we got to where we are now. We had to get a mortgage from the Enterprise Bank and Trust to buy the building. We've gotten loans from friends and supporters, and we've gotten donations, and that's what we will do.
Do you feel that you'll be able to accomplish that?
Of course we will. This project is not going to die on this project. It was a matter of principle, to be perfectly honest, that we came to you.
Sure.
It is not going to make or break the Drew Farm project. Those five apartments are going to be there, and Habitat is going to have two homes in our barn.
So as you mentioned, principle, if I understand correctly from the memo that you submitted, Kristen, we did provide a waiver to Habitat for Humanity, who's building two units at this very same location. And so I totally hear.
But they didn't get CPA money.
Okay, that's fair. That's fair, and I definitely hear what both Tom and Andrea are saying, and you're absolutely correct. I guess my challenge is, you know, same building, roughly the same project, two nonprofits, why would we waive the, provide a waiver for Habitat and not for the Drew Farmhouse? That's, if we hadn't done that for Habitat for Humanity, I'd be like, hey, I'm totally with you, but that's my only sort of sticking point.
I do just want to add for the board's knowledge, the. the rate of affordability between the units is different as well. So the Habitat units are at the eighty percent area median income for affordability. These units are between eighty and a hundred percent. So the affordability is not as low, I guess you could, I might not be using the correct terminology, but the rate of the units that will go to the people who will live there is different for what can be collected in terms of rent.
Yeah. I think one of the questions that I got from people who are concerned about this is the lack of process. What is the criteria that this board uses to determine when we waive a fee and when we don't? And I don't know if we have some criteria for that.
Well, my comment would be that we did not waive for projects, Roberta McGuire and Helena Crocker that had CPA money. We did waive for Habitat, which did not have CPA money. In fact, if we go back to Jupiter Hill, also a Habitat project, we waived the fees, but they had no CPA money. So we have got one operation. Typically, you get one or the other. But, I mean, in fairness, Stony Brook, two, got both. So we do have that. There is no firm policy, but since we've kind of been acting as if there was one. John, did you have a comment or?
Yeah, I got to go along with Tom, and then I'll be on this. You mentioned that the CPA funds, if we weren't looking to give to you, we didn't have any play ourselves, or they were reserved. But that's still tax funding that we did provide. And it's, you know, it's $27,000 in the operating budget, or lack thereof, I think means something. Let me ask you a question. The Habitat for Humanity, how did they acquire their interest into that barn? How did they get that interest?
They have no.
As far as ownership?
They have no ownership. We own the property. We have gifted them the space. They have no ownership in the property at all. At some point, there will be a transaction because the properties, the two houses, will be sold to Habitat families. But at this moment, the whole process is going through on a handshake between the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. and Habitat for Humanity. They have not paid us anything for that property. It's ours. We own the whole two acres. We own the house and the barn. We own everything we bought on November 20th.
So, yeah, I asked the question when we were first doing this about the equity in the property as far as, you know, we were investing 1.4 million into it. I think your initial loan was quarter million, something like that?
It was more than, yes, right. The mortgage is for one point, we bought the property for 1.1 million dollars.
We both put how much in?
I'm sorry?
You said both of us put 1.4 million in?
No, I'm saying that we bought the property, the Drew Farmhouse, Inc. bought the property for 1.1 million dollars. We've obviously had other expenses since then. And the town's share in our public-private partnership has been the 1.45 million in community preservation fund.
Well, that property's going to be worth a lot more than that billion when you get through with it, utilizing the 1.45 million dollars for construction.
And we will pay property taxes accordingly.
It's going to work a lot more than that.
So remember, John, that we also have, there is a deed restriction in perpetuity to make it income restricted, so it's not going to have a market rate value that you might think. It'll be a restrictive value based upon the deed.
It was not much in demand, you may recall, when it was on the market the first time. It just sat there for a year and a half. And I think as a deed-restricted, affordable housing property, we have no intention of selling it, and if we sell it, we must sell it to someone else because of the agreement we signed with you in January of 2024, someone else who will continue it as a affordable property. So it will be that in perpetuity, John. There is no value to it that is going to increase, that is going to be beneficial to.
So it will be sold for whatever's been invested? There's not going to be any kind of accrual of equity in it?
That would be, no, that's far from what we're expecting. No. And we have no intention of paying, of selling it. The Drew Farmhouse has committed this project as long as we all are alive.
We have other.
That's why I chose younger board members.
We have a number of properties, John, that the town has subsidized with the formal housing funds, and they all have deed restrictions, so they can, and some of them do sell, but they are then sold at a reduced rate because of the affordability restriction. So you can't really build much equity with that arrangement.
Even if they did, wouldn't it go just back into the nonprofit, and that nonprofit would probably put it back into the building?
Yes, exactly. You're right about that.
So what did you say to the person, or the citizen that says 1.45 million is enough?
Is this relevant to you?
I'm not sure.
This is relevant to tonight.
So we've all agreed, or the town agreed, that 1.5 million was appropriate. Town Meeting approved it. So that's not on the table. What's on the table is the $21,000 roughly in permit fees. I think we've all spoken our minds. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to opine? Sure. Okay, just coming back a phone at your. I don't know, Michael, it's.
Yeah, I know, right into.
The face you've got, yeah, here you go.
Thank you. Michael Patton, do you need my address or?
Yes.
Sid. Three Plain Road. My question would be, permit fees are available online. This is known information. Anyone that's applying for a permit, a building, can get these permit fees. Did you assume the permit fees would be waived in your budgets?
That's what I said in my presentation.
Okay, so you assume they'd be waived.
We were absolutely wrong.
Do you have a history of them being waived in other towns?
No, we never looked into that. I thought it was my naivete about what, what a not-for-profit. I knew we didn't pay sales tax. So, and the other element of it was the public-private partnership. I thought that we were sort of partners with the town, and therefore the town might waive it. And I asked the building commissioner, and he said he had no authority to do that. So it was first, it was neophyte first time out. That was my error, that I made that assumption. And in our budgeting, we made the same error.
And have you guys done construction projects in Massachusetts before?
We guys have not. We guys are Westford residents who passionately care about this, saw an empty building that we thought was perfect for us. It is our first foray in these waters. I have personally done my own home that was very comparable, but this is our first time into this pond.
Okay. I think that's all. I just wanted to get some clarification on that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Align with one person?
Yeah, I'm not sure if these are relevant anymore. So James Kokas through Laura, who is logged on, does the current budget climate speak to any waivers of permit fees? If the general population of Westford had a better understanding of the upcoming budget issues and need for an override, this project would have not been approved. Can precedent override the reality of the current budget situation? I don't know if that warrants a response or not.
Well, I think that the observation that current budget climate of the project would not have been approved is not necessarily true. But Tom answered the question, I think, in terms of the board's view of the budget, operating budget today compared to this request today as being problematic.
Mr. Chairman, if I were at Town Meeting, I'd move the question. I mean, I think that.
Yes, okay. My feeling is that we are done, so I may have a request, so I guess we either.
Do you get a motion or do we just not entertain the request?
You need a motion to approve or not approve.
So I would make the motion to not approve waiving of the building permit fees for the Drew Farmhouse project.
So all in favor of not supporting the waiver would be saying aye. So John?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm an aye.
Tom?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Sorry.
Oh, don't be sorry. Thank you for your time. We will move on.
If you don't ask, you know.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Thank you for.
That's my motto in life.
Thank you for all the hard work you guys are doing on this project.
You're very kind, Chris. I appreciate that a lot.
Looks great. Can't wait to see it finished.
Okay, next we have a request to approve and sign the 2024 State Primary Election Warrant to be held on September 3rd, 2024.
Sure. So I will walk you through this very briefly. This is a request from the town clerk, Lori Shaw, to sign the state primary warrant, which is in your packet. We have precincts voting at Stony Brook Middle School and Westford Academy. The state primary is September 3rd of 2024. We've already mailed out 4,000 ballots. The clerk's office is very busy. They're obtaining information coming back. Registered voters also may always vote at this in-person from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on September 3rd. Just wanted to be alerting the board and members of the public that we will be holding early voting hours at the clerk's office Saturday, August 24th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Monday, August 26th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Tuesday, August 27th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Wednesday, August 28th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Thursday, August 29th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And Friday, August 30th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The Monday is Labor Day, and then we'll go right into the election. So that's just the overview. I would request a motion to approve and sign, and I do have the signature documents here for you to sign before you leave this evening, the state primary election warrant for 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I'm an aye. And then approve and act upon the, sorry, review and act to approve select board and town manager 2025 goals. So first, thanks to everybody who worked with Kristin, you know, one-on-one to get these things most of the way there without having to have a special meeting like we did last year. Ideally, we could approve and sign tonight. I mean, I realize that we may have a couple of things to discuss that may push us back a little bit, but I'd like to keep it relatively quick since I think we've all had our two cents and talked to Kristin, and we're in pretty general agreement around what the goal should be. With that in mind, any comments or invited? Andrea?
The only one I have, and I put this in my comment before, and I will say it again, is that under communications, and since we have our town moderator here, she can weigh in on it too, but under communications, we have as a goal, coordinate with the town moderator and the public to gauge attendance at town meetings to ensure the best experience for residents with conducting business of the meeting in the most professional and effective manner. From my perspective, that's part of Kristin's job, okay? And that's sort of encompassed in her job and what she should be doing for every town meeting. So I don't know that this has to be a goal for her because I think it's something that she should be doing and coordinating with our town moderator all the time.
Well, full disclosure, that probably was partly my fault. So my comment had been to Kristin that if we've had a tradition of town meetings being 200, 300, 500 people, and we went from that to, you know, 1,000, 2,000 numbers. And so we've now designed a infrastructure to support that kind of a turnout. And that has a certain cost that goes along with it. Instead of spending 8,000, we're spending 20,000. So my comment had been, can we find a way to predict turnout such that we don't overstand on buses and custodians and detailed police? However, these are 2025 goals, and realistically, we can expect, I think, a high turnout in September's, or October's town meeting, and probably without, you know, guessing the budget too much, again, in the spring town meeting. So, anal town meeting. So my guess is this is a moot point for the year. It's a long way of saying, I agree with you. We probably could take it off. But the path to get there began differently than where it ended up.
And, all right, so I.
I was more concerned about budget than it was communications, but reality is, I don't think we have an issue in 2025 to worry about, so that's board's problem. Unless we want to chime in, Angela, if you really, really want it, we'll keep it.
I do feel like I have to say that from day one, when I first met Kristin, she's done everything possible to help me with town meetings. So whether it was a goal or not, I think she's been doing that. And whether you want to leave it as a goal or take it out as a goal, I think she'll continue doing it as well.
Thanks. So we can take it if you want, that's.
I would support the friendly amendment to remove it, just in the general interest, which I think you brought up in the first meeting.
Right. That was my other thought, is that I just took a goal away from, off of her list.
Well, we'll strike that one. Any other comments on the goals? Look pensive, Johnny. Is that a comment or just deep in thought?
Deep in thought. Whether I raise it or not. Okay.
Going once, going twice? Okay, so is there a motion to support?
I'll move to approve the town manager's.
Fourteen goals.
FY 2025 goals, fourteen goals as listed here in our packet tonight.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Thank you all for your support in creating these, and I look forward to carrying them out with you all over the course of the next few months.
You'll be very busy.
Yes, as usual.
So moving on to the next item, which is to draft the, review the draft warrant for Town Meeting. Is there a, I guess, Angela, do you want to speak to this or, okay? I have questions you've got prepared.
Yeah, I can certainly speak to it. Absolutely. So we have before you a very draft, draft Town Meeting warrant, but wanted to make sure that the board and the members of the public were aware of what we were working on for the special town meeting to take place Monday evening, October 21st, at 7:00 PM at Westford Academy, with an adjourn date if we need to go two nights to the following Monday, October 21st, 2024, at Westford Academy. We have talked in the past about the setup. I just want to remind the board and members of the public. We are wiring two additional rooms at Westford Academy, the cafeteria and the auxiliary gym, to have an approximate capacity of 2,600 people. We had just over 2,100 people at the spring town meeting at the Academy Field. We feel that it's in the best interest of the town to have an indoor location because of New England weather and other things. So at this point in time, I just wanted to very briefly go through a 17 article warrant with you, just touching on topics, and I have a little bit of commentary. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add in advance of me moving through the warrant. Okay, sure. So the, working with the town moderator, it's recommended that we have the zoning articles upfront for this warrant. That is not traditional for the town of Westford, but seeing the interest in these articles, we feel that it would be proper to do that. The first article would be to amend the zoning bylaw to define and regulate firearm businesses and related terms. And this process has already gone through the planning board. The public hearing has opened, has closed, and you've received a report from the planning board and the Assistant Town Manager of Land Use on this. The next few articles are zoning-related as well, and we'll move through the public hearing process with the planning board over the next month or two. The second is to amend the zoning bylaw to define, update, or regulate additional uses and to update use allowances, including but not limited to breweries, distilleries, wineries, brew pubs, contractors' yards, general service establishments, restaurants, and massage establishments. The next zoning bylaw amendment is to review and modify perhaps the parking requirements, and Jeff Maris and Jeff Genowitz have spoken with you about that. The fourth article you spoke about this evening is to make the amendment to the zoning bylaw for temporary trailers to achieve consistency with Mass. General Law 40A, Section 3. Moving down to fiscal, financial, we have placeholders here as we actually don't anticipate any financial articles, but we are still closing out fiscal year 24 budget and reviewing the fiscal year 25 operating budget as it relates to the state budget and our free cash. So we do have a placeholder to approve fiscal year 2025 budget adjustments. We do have a placeholder for any capital appropriations. We have not received any at this point in time. And we do have a placeholder to reduce the amount raised by taxes in fiscal '25. Again, I don't anticipate any of those will come to fruition, but we want to keep those on there for the foreseeable future until that comes to fruition. Article eight is also a placeholder for approval of Community Preservation Committee recommendations for community preservation funds. We do not have any applications before the Community Preservation Committee at this point in time.
And just historically, we only do CPA funding in our special town meeting if it's an emergency or something special.
Thank you for that reminder. Article nine is to amend the reconsideration of votes under Chapter 51, Section 7 of the general bylaws. Angela, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all. Angela, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all?
This is really just what I had stated at the last town meeting to clarify what would be acceptable as a motion for reconsideration. This is just putting what I've been doing for the last town meetings into the bylaw.
Article 10 is an adjustment of our bylaw related to the publication of bylaw amendments, such as the general bylaw or the zoning bylaw. Right now, our general bylaw requires that we publish the amendments of the bylaw in a local newspaper. This is not a requirement of state law, and seeing that we're trying to cut back on timing of things as well as financial constraints, we're looking to strike that publication requirement. Article 11 is to rescind Chapter 157, the transient merchants bylaw. At the previous town meeting, we addressed the solicitation and canvassing bylaw adoption. However, we failed to rescind the transient merchant bylaw that does take place over. Article 12 is a placeholder to amend the stretch energy code. This was brought as a suggestion for the March town meeting. Staff had recommended we hold that to the October town meeting. My staff, as well as members of the Clean Energy Committee, are meeting tomorrow to discuss if they want to bring this forward to your, for your consideration. So, again, just a placeholder at this point in time. We have a placeholder for a noise bylaw that I'm working on with the building commissioner. We have the acceptance of Cloverleaf Lane as a public way and Diane Lane as a public way. We have a placeholder for the acquisition of, to acquire a gift of land off of Howard Road for general municipal purposes that the Conservation Commission and Conservation Agency are working through. And then finally, our last article will be a citizen's petition to enable citizens to vote on warrant articles without physically attending town meeting. The town clerk has certified those signatures, and it is a viable citizen's petition for your warrant. So, again, very draft form. You will be working through closing the warrant and then voting your recommendations, and the finance committee will be reviewing the warrant at their meeting on, I believe, September 19th.
Chris?
I'm sorry, so 17, we, we did determine that it is a valid citizen's petition?
Well, it's valid in terms of that it's met the signatory requirements.
Right, I thought we were also, sorry, you probably had a-
We have reviewed it with town council. We don't know if the legislature will approve of that. They don't feel that it may, but that's really up first for town meeting to pass and then to bring it forward.
Okay.
And just, it looks like the language is to advise the select board to work with town manager and with representation, basically. So, it's sort of like, go work and see if this is possible with some knowledge that at least we don't think this is currently possible under-
Correct. It's not, it is not currently possible under Mass General Law.
So, this would be like a recommendation to advocate for something that these citizens think-
Right, it's not, not binding.
Yeah.
I think John had his-
John?
Kristen, your meeting tomorrow might suggest that you take a look at that guidance for specialized energy code adoption by DOE or R, where they, they call for a public hearings before it goes through the process, or is part of the process. And so, I just suggest you take a look at that if we're considering doing this in October.
Thank you for that suggestion.
So, this is just a discussion, but it's not a required-
Just a discussion, no need to vote, just wanted to make the board apprised of this as well as members of the public.
Thanks. Anything else?
I was just, one of the reasons we're taking a different order than we usually do is to encourage people to attend because we're trying to put, as we have been doing, the articles that generate a lot of interest upfront, so people know when they're happening. And I would just suggest that maybe we look at 14 and 15, which are the street acceptances, because those are also things that people want to be there to vote for and don't have the ability always to be able to stay around and wait for it to happen late in the evening. And we might want to put those closer to the front as well.
We can definitely discuss that offline.
Okay.
Off that matter, I mean, I suspect, I agree with putting those waiting up front because I think we'll have attendance driven by the Article 1, but one could raise the case that the town reading, Article 17 or 18, whatever is, the last one might also be a big discussion item. So, I'm not sure we're quite doing that. I mean, I don't disagree with the order, but I do think we're gonna have a bilateral interest level here.
We can discuss all of them. I mean, hate to say that some articles are more boring than others, but I think that is the popular perception. So, the higher interest articles, whatever they are, maybe our policy should be to put them all up front.
And also, just looking at this warrant right now, I mean, at most, we're gonna have 17, but it looks like a number of them are gonna drop off anyway, so.
Yeah, I don't make predictions anymore, but I agree.
No, just from looking at our placeholders, okay?
Okay, so-
There's a question online. So, Valerie Young asks, are citizen petitions subject to the four, the five conditions or five criteria that allow something to be considered a special versus annual town meeting? My understanding is that state law allows for any citizen's petition that meets the signature requirement to be put on the warrant.
Yeah.
Which is different for each type of meeting, right?
That is correct. So, it's, it's 10 signatures for annual meeting and 100 signatures for special.
And I don't think there's any discretion. I think as long, as long as the signatures are certified, it has to go on the warrant.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I think we're done. Next up, minutes for approval and release from July 16th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Board reports updates, do we have any?
I don't know if, if we talked in this group, Kristen, apologies if you talked about it last time, but just the exciting kind of kickoff of the business development consultant that's going on with the Economic Development Committee.
We can, I can definitely touch upon that. So, at previous board meetings, you authorized us to sign a contract with TROST for our economic development consulting services. They came to our last economic development meeting, and they will be there on Thursday when we meet. Their scope has been defined, and we've shared that with the board, that they will be helping us with some branding and marketing, business directory, outreach. We were actually at the farmer's market today, asking some questions about what can we do for small businesses. We feed that material back to them. They're helping facilitate a survey through the Economic Development Committee. So, we're really ramping up right now in terms of, if they're work. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else?
No, just it's exciting that it's, that it's kicking off. This can be part of our long-term budget solution, and it sounds like the right people are working on this. Also, the committee itself is very robustly staffed right now. It's like a, I mean, I'm sure there are many high watermarks in history, but it's a high watermark right now with people who are involved in it, people with really interesting backgrounds, a lot of interest. So, anyway, a lot of, a lot of energy right now in the economic development, and it's, couldn't come at a better time because we need it.
Okay, Kristen, town manager, town manager's report.
Sure, absolutely. So, I don't have anything other to report than the purchase orders and contract requests. So, purchase orders, Westford Collision for repairs to Cruiser 24 to be paid from our insurance account that we've been reimbursed in the amount of $10,555.77 as requested by the Police Department. CDW and G for VMware software, excuse me, VMW, VMware software for creating virtual servers in the amount of $35,670 as requested by the Technology Department. Motorola Solutions for radio equipment associated with the public safety system upgrade in the amount of $10,957.82 as requested by the Fire Department. And Modular Communications for radio equipment for public safety system upgrades in the amount of $26,300, excuse me, $356.64 as requested by the Fire Department.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
So, contracts, Conica Minolta Business Solutions for Managed Print Services, the amount of $28,000 as requested by the Technology Department. You did approve the Nobus Group proposal. The Cybercom Communications for fiscal year 25 Public Safety Radio Service Agreement in the amount of $17,369.16 as requested by the Public Safety Department. And TEC, who is our traffic engineering consultant for a contract amendment for the final design phase of the West Street at North Street, main, excuse me, West Street at North Main Street pedestrian improvement project in the amount of $30,000 as requested by the Engineering Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Move to waive reading of correspondence.
Second.
All in favor? Andrea?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I just want to remind this board and members of the public, you have a special meeting on Monday, August 19th for the efficiencies meeting with the school committee and the finance committee at Millennium, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you for the reminder.